Before we could proceed as well, let me firstly introduce the panel that I'm with. I'm not alone. I'm with honourable members in the table, who are here to also oversee the process of submissions towards the Electoral Amendment Bill. So I would start introducing from my far left, Honorable Tito, Honorable Canile, and from my far right, Honorable Loquas. Loquasi.
[speaking Portuguese]
For a moment I thought you were saying Loquasi. Um, before we can, I'll bring forth the mayor of the municipality to come and formally welcome all of us. I would like to acknowledge the speaker, Meselwani Kiba. Kiba. Um, I've just been made aware that Meselwani has gone outside.
Oh, banana.
And the speaker of Ngwate municipality, Neheng Mopedi.
And then, Meh Musa Khota, Meh Muheng Mopedi.
And the mayor of Tualapile municipality, Kinaleman Pupunisi or Pupurisi. Hey, the handwriting here. Pupunzi. Were you wanting to be a doctor in your life? Okay. Did she stand? Oh, okay.
[speaking Portuguese]
The mayor of Ngwate municipality, Victoria Di Biere.
[speaking Portuguese]
Ngwate.
Oh, Ma Ngwate, alright.
Ngwate municipality.
Ngwate municipality, ne, ke ratoro wa Ngwate municipality.
The council whip, Ma Jeremane.
Ma Jeremane, yeah, the council whip.
Okay. And all councillors present with us who have not mentioned. But I would like to bring forward the mayor, who would introduce, who would welcome all of us before we start with the session, Mr. Toy Mokazani.
Sir, it's lovely.
Kindly please come to the podium to welcome us. Is the mayor here? Okay. I'm made aware that the mayor needs 10 minutes to be here. Can we kindly get the speaker to welcome us? The speaker went out. Ow, was the, um... Ma Jeremane, council whip, kindly come and welcome us, because this is your municipality. We can't ask a mayor outside the municipality to welcome us.
Thank you very much, the Chair of the Session and your interrash. Um, I would like to firstly welcome you from the Parliament and also welcome the executive mayors present here, comrade Victoria Di Biere and comrade, um, I'm sorry, councillor Putzing. Also, welcome all the speakers from different municipalities and the council whips and all councillors present. But most of all, I would like to welcome all the community members who are present here. [speaking Portuguese]
Thank you. Thank you. Let me also acknowledge amongst ourselves, who have support staff from Parliament, that assisted with getting this meeting today to be in effect. And also acknowledge the interpreters on the far left, who'd also interpret according to speakers' languages, so that it assists us with the meeting. My far right there, we have technicians who are dealing with sound communications, acknowledging all support staff present with us today. We're here today to solicit views from the public in relation to the Electoral Amendment Bill, based on the court outcomes. We're here as the panel to solicit views or submissions that you'd be making as the community or public. We're not here to respond nor seek clarity questions or responding to any outside matter that does not relate to the Electoral Amendments Bill. Therefore, any matters or any issues that you would have, that deals or relates to service delivery, kindly liaise with your escorts, your municipal councillors, your mayors, who are present here. But this meeting will not unfortunately deal with those matters. All views that will be expressed here will be taken into consideration when finalisation of this bill would be done. Based on the background of the bill, on 11 June 2020, the Constitutional Court in the New Nation Movement, NPC, and others versus the President of the Republic of South Africa and others, 2020, the New Nation Movement case declared the Electoral Act of 1998, Act Number 73 of 1998, to be unconstitutional to the extent that it requires that other citizens may be elected to the National Assembly and the provincial legislatures only through their membership of political parties. The declaration of unconstitutionality was suspended for a period of 24 months to afford Parliament an opportunity to remedy the defect in the Electoral Act, giving rise to the unconstitutionality. The Minister of Home Affairs introduced the bill to Parliament on the 10th January 2022. The committee published the bill in all official languages for comment on 21st January 2022, and the closing date was on the 21st February 2022. Based on the court outcome, briefly, the draft bill proposes an amendment to the Electoral Act to include independent candidates to partake in the national and provincial legislatures. The ground rules before we proceed to submissions is that, let's kindly put our phones on silent. We know we might receive an important call or would be needed urgently somewhere else, but let's respect the meeting and put all our phones on silence so that we don't disturb speakers on the platform who'd be making submissions. We must equally encourage tolerance towards one another, especially when expressing different views towards the submissions, and respect each candidate or each person that would be presenting or making a submission. Therefore, I would note hands that would want to speak towards the Electoral Amendment Bill. Um, I would start with the first round of hands. I'm not sure how many chairs are put in the middle. How many chairs are this? It's eight chairs. I would take first round of eight hands. Those eight hands that I would be noting, they must come sit in the middle. That's how the speakers would be identified. Can I kindly get hands that would want to make submissions, so that we start with the meeting?
[speaking Portuguese]
You'll be the first one with a peach jacket. Would be the second one. Um, kindly if I note your hand, proceed to the chairs, according to the number I've given you. Would be the fourth one. You'd be the fifth one with a blue shirt. There are no hands. Six one, Majoro. The first round takes eight hands. And I've noted six. The seventh one with a red cap of the SACP. And the eighth hand, you can go at the back. That's the first round.
[speaking Portuguese]
Kindly note that each speaker, when he or she makes submissions, must indicate their name, which organisation or NPO, NGO, CBO they belong to, whether they accept the Electoral Amendment Bill based on the court outcome or reject the bill and make submissions or amendments to it. Thank you. The first speaker, you can come to the podium.
Amandla.
Awe, tchou.
Amandla.
So, na kitho hananali the bill. We all know that the ANC supports the PR system in terms of the race, the language, the gender, the class, and other stuff. So the problem with the long ballot caused by many independents can result in a very long ballot paper. A multi-page ballot is a very problem for voters, the IEC and the parties. Voters will need to search for their own parties and their independents. They will need much time to vote. And the IEC will need bigger budget for printing, distribution, and stuff. The councillors will need more time for counting. We are very concerned that the amendments should find a way not to waste money, ballot, time, and make elections too complicated and impractical. We have to be very careful that if voters find it difficult to vote and find their preferred choice on a ballot, the election will not reflect the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Second speaker.
No, thanks very much, Honorable Chair President. Um, my name is Sizwe Mbalo. I'm the convener of the ANC Fesile Dabi region. Chair, I stand here to represent the views as expressed by the Regional Committee of the African National Congress in this particular region where you are. I think what is important, Chair, is that as the region, we support the bill. But of course, certain amendments that we propose, they should actually be considered. Mine in particular, Chair, are we talking to the PR system, vis-à-vis the constituency-based approach. As my starting point, Chair, I just want to emphasise to yourself and also to our members and to the House that as the ANC, you uphold the supremacy of the Constitution and the rule of law. That in pursuance of the Constitutional Court order, the ANC would like to submit the following. One, that we support the PR system. But however, I will also elaborate where we have serious concerns, if time allows. I'm not even sure, um, how many minutes or so that I'm allowed to speak. Is it three or five? Okay, thank you very much. First, Chair, I would like to draw the attention of honourable members in the House to subsection 19, subsection 1, 2, and 3 of the Constitution, but mainly subsection 3, which to me is very important. But I will not go in detail in terms of that particular subsection, Chair. I think you are privy to know what I'm referring to. Subsection 3B refers that any member of the public is allowed by the Constitution to stand for political office. I think, Chair, you still recall in, the ANC has always supported the PR system. And this can actually date back since from the establishment of municipalities and also the national and provincial government. We have always advocated that minority rights must always be protected and that all small parties must have a way to fight in expression in any decision-making body, either at the national or at the local or the provincial level. Our belief is that the PR system allows better representation of all disadvantages groups or marginalised groups in our communities because we have an opportunity to pass the P2, the unrepresented, and also to make their voice known. And such a representation will make a very important and fundamental change in the political body in South Africa. That the PR system ensures that parties, including independents, will appeal to their core supporters. Our view, Chair, is that through the PR system, at least people have a right or many choices to make in terms of who they are supposed to support, to represent them at any particular level. And that will also afford the independents an opportunity also to fight in expression amongst the electorate. Our concern is that the constituency system make it difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation. Our view, Chair, is that the constituency system really limits many choices that the electorate might have in terms of making sure that they elect or choose the persons that they would like them to represent in Parliament. However, Chair, we also want to make it and to be registered that we support option one of the Ministerial Advisory Committee. I don't think, Chair, I will go in detail, but I think, Chair, should be privy to understand the content of that particular option one that I'm referring to. Because we don't want uncertainties, we don't want legal challenges at the end of the day. Therefore, we are raising this bachelor issue so that they should be considered by the committee or any authorised body that will actually be looking at this bachelor amendment. Chair, I think any system has its own advantages and disadvantages. And also this one in this bachelor bill, we have also very serious concerns about some practicalities of some of the proposals as it's contained in the bill. But however, we ask the Home Affairs Committee, that is actually entrusted with this bachelor bill, to consider some of these challenges that are there in the bill carefully, as they may cause unintended consequences that can harm our democracy. And we believe that this bill has been processed. It will actually enjoy some sort of further investigation and make sure that it's in line with the Constitution, it's in line with the legal provisions, and that as we enter a stage where the bill has to be ascended by the president, at least all other issues has been raised in option one of the Bachelor Report, I've been attended to. Thank you very much, Chair, and also to honourable members in the House at last. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, come forth.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak in front of you and make a submission. We reject the bill in its current form. And, um, my name is Salma Kok, and I represent the Ngwate Residents Association. Um, we formed a 15A association for the local elections, and we have one seat in council. So we are not a political party, and we will not endeavour to be one. So, um, we are especially focusing on the value of the vote. Because where we are standing today, this journey started in 52 already. And in 55, it was enshrined in the Freedom Charter, where everybody has the right... where everybody has the right to vote and to stand, every adult woman and every adult man. And that finds expression in the votes and that brings us to where we are today with the Electoral Bill. If you see the Freedom Charter as the basis of our current constitution, in the nineteen fifty, fifty-five, it was a Chevy. If you look at it in a vehicle, the basis was there. The people shall govern. All those things have been carried through. In nineteen ninety-eight, with Electoral Bill, Constitution, everything that followed, we got to a minibus. But we could still not choose our driver, right? So what we're propagating is for constitutions, constituencies that are smaller, that we can choose our own driver. What we see this bill, this bill must present to us this luxury bus with a trailer, not discarding extra votes, which is currently the issue. If an independent candidate gets sufficient votes for a seat, the additional votes are discarded. We don't, we want the trailer on that bus, on the luxury bus. We want the air conditioning. We don't just want independents painted on the side. We want it like Albert Lutulli said, again, flesh and blood meaning to words such as democracy, freedom and liberty. We don't want to see it just on black and white, we want to see it in practice. We don't want good words, there are lots of proportional possibilities. We do not have to confirm, conform to the rest of the world. We are a unique nation and we can do something unique with this bill. Other countries are looking at us. Is twenty pages the best that we can do for a journey that has taken so long? In twenty, in two thousand and two, already they were looking at a new electoral bill. This is the time that we can rather ask for an extension and put something good on the table that will encompass everybody and the needs and the will of the people and that the people shall govern. The votes need to be equal. The constitution says the votes of some do not weigh, this is what happens, the votes of some do not weigh more than the votes of others. That's how it should be, it should be the same. The vote of every voter has a direct influence on the outcome. If votes are discarded, that is not the case. Then everybody who has sacrificed their lives to get to this point, it's for nothing. So we need to look seriously at this, we can do better than this. I believe there are very, very good minds in parliament, in law, that can help with this. I saw other presentations that were so good. The People's Bill, the Majority Mag Report. There's so many compromises to be made, we can do better. And I please, I urge you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dumelan. Kilewela, mnyatlaa, obamona na, lu hutlafana ka ma ikutloaka, libisola ka ki Salma Kok. Ki ama mona ki hanana li bili na, ebeyu len mona kajin. Ronan re na li stulo silising parlamenting, ena harimohatwa di politik, me hara shabana lo ba mohawati politik. Tsipamaya ro na ihudi ma bulenba vote. Hutwa, kaleka di numozari nineteen fifty si, hutwa ka mula oteo, huya hufri no chata, hubeleli tukelo ya huvota. Me re tsitalela hori, tukela ena intezwepele. Hoba ni, mula oteo ore, ba tu ba ta, kibona ba ta buza. Kahou, re re, ma batwa ebeyo na ba ihan, ba iha tetelam, hona ba muswa kiman. Griske ra, rehanana leta ba ya hori, bili ire hola shwe, di vote, teka odimo hu muedi. Re wana senana ili sesalu ka me, re re, bonkhetem ba ike meting, etlamia ho ba ka rolaya tebezoo. Kahou, re kakupa hori, bili ena e shevisi soe, kamata lo fita, kamohu ilin katin hona joali, intlafatwe, i ilukiswe. Hori, ebeye betiri, hutwanali, di bili tedi inteka ren bili ya ba tu. Me kahou, ki lukupa kamata hori, lina hanisise, itaba ya hu, ya hulu kisabili, imata falofita, kamohu ilin katin hajoali, kialibu.
Thank you. The fourth speaker, can you kindly come forth? And note, kindly do indicate before you speak your name, where you, which organisation you are representing, or CBO, NPO, and do indicate as well, no you reject or accept the bill, then make amendments trade. Thank you.
Thank you, the honourable Chair. I'm from South African Communist Party in African National Congress. I'm from the South African Communist Party, member of South African Communist Party and a member of African National Congress. I fully support the bill. But my question is this, that the process will be fair in terms of selecting the PRs? Selecting the PRs? As a member of the African National Congress, I fully support the bill too. My political party fully supports the will of the people in terms of the people must elect and choose their candidates. But on the question of the processes must be fair, I'm asking that in terms of when the people are independent candidates, the PR candidates, when it comes to counting, if those who have, if those who have smaller votes than the others, do the votes will be combined or what will happen? Because of, I see these processes will have the unfair unfair measures when it comes to counting whereby we will see most people will register and have will be registered as candidates, ne? The ballot paper will be large in terms of voters and in terms of counting, there will be many candidates. In terms of selections, there will be registered political parties and individuals. So when it comes to counting and those who have smaller, smaller, I think, smaller numbers, I don't know what will happen with them. On the other, I will question this. Is this processes going to be only on the local government or on the provincial government? When it comes to the provincial government, whereby we will have the independent candidates, I see this as an attack of democracy by stating this. Our constitution was influenced by the Freedom Charter. By drafting their constitution, their collective leaderships as the different political parties, they make their own constitutions and then choose their own candidates to go for the elections. As an individual, will you stand being elected by the people with your own constitution without having a constitution, the collective consultation constitution that you have, you will have by your own? So the individuals will be elected by our public. But I see this as an attack of democracy by allowing the capital, the capital, the capitalist ideology to get into our democracy, to get in our democratic processes as to be elected in our, in our election process to contest as an candidate. I will close my view.
Thank you. And your questions will go to the committee, we will therefore not be able to answer them as we have indicated here. But we will not provide any clarity seeking questions or no, we'll be responding to any submissions that will be made here. Ours is to take and solicit views that you would be submitting towards the amendment bill. So for the consideration that you have made will go directly to the committee. Thank you.
Kialabo, amudula stulo, libisola ka ki Danieli, ki sitosa esse Communist Party, li sitosa ANC. Ki ama mona hu tseheza bili, impa kenali di putso xemalo. Ki ba ta oteo ho re na, tebezoo, etlo sebe, etlo sebediso, na etlavalitika tikan hu di PR. Jolo ka ki seki chulo ki li sitosa ANC, me kau ba ANC itseheza bili lena ki a, ki a tseheza. Hoba ni ANC itseheza, tebezoo ya hori ba tu ba iha tetelam, bonkhetem ba bon. Impa ke re, tebezoo ena etlamia ho balitika tikan. Monan li bonkhetem ba ike meting, ki ba ta oteo ho re na, ha hua balwa di heto. Ha ngenkheteng afmani di heto zetlasi, na ditla, ditla ananuelana. Kibona ekahutla ba lilie eme. Hape, kibona tebezoo ena etlo taka, lena lelelele la bonkheteng, hutla huunkuana kuetelelo hu heto, li hoba ni hutlo bo na li bonkhetem ba ba ngada, li meha eme ngada ya di politik. Mula oteo, u susumelezo iki Freedom Charter, kahou meha. Iha tetela, ba tu ba bona ba ba ta ongo ba be eme. Jola hau li ngenkheteng ya ike meting. Uklo, na uklotla, u hetwa ki ba tu, ndelelo hu wisan na, li bo na kaposika sekata, wa e hu bili li bo na na. Haki petela, ngare, bonkheteng ba ike meting, ba loka la o hetwa ki, ki ba, ki ba tu. Impa, ki bo na sena ili tlaselo ya democracy, ekaki tebezoo etlo, etlo zamaiswa kibu capitalist, kialabo.
Thank you. The fifth speaker.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Victoria De Beere. I'm from the African National Congress. Chair, I would like to just say that we support the bill and just with the following inputs that we want to make on the bill itself. Our greatest concern, Chair, is on the long ballot paper. That will be created by the independents and party and other parties. Our concern is that the new system might result into a long process, which may become impractical for the voters. And I would like to make the following example, Chair, that in twenty nineteen, if we can remember, with the national elections, we had about forty-eight national parties that has registered and another two hundred individuals who stand as independents, which made that ballot paper very long, about ten pages. Our greatest concern as well with this process of the long ballot is that we need, the amendment must not create a situation where we would really have to spend a lot of money and more time in making the elections complicated and very impractical. Ultimately, if voters find it difficult to vote and find it for, to vote and find their preferred candidate or the party that they want to vote for on that ballot paper, that means that the elections might as well not be fair because they are struggling. Another issue that we want to put forward, Chair, is that please review the qualification for independent candidates to stand in other parties, new parties. If you do, if you do make, if you don't make it stricter, if you don't make that process stricter, it means that we will have a thousand people standing as independents and parties, new parties. And I'm also saying this because in twenty nineteen, it shows that it's impractical because in twenty nineteen, out of forty-eight, but this on new independents and parties that came in only fourteen made it into parliament. But we took a lot, a lot of time in terms of voting. And my last submission, Chair, would be, I would want to propose that the new parties who are not yet represented in legislatures in parliament and that independent candidates should be able to demonstrate that they have voter support out there. They must also show us that they will have a chance to win a seat in parliament or legislature. We also suggest that the threshold should be at least one-third of the quota needed for a seat in the previous elections. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
Kialabo cha, amudula stulo, nalina lakaki Victoria De Beere, kielelo kala ANC, re amuhela mula othomo ono, orana lo ona. Edin khalifala dile maloske ba ta hori di kakisaki hori, etzamiswe ene encha ya di thopo, toataha iberi kesente. Kasakai, ka twenty nineteen, erenali di thopo, zabose cha ba, erenali di party di forty-eight, le ba tu ba ba ike meting kanusi bon thope, ba li two hundred. Me kanako e li, senasana sahore panpiri ya di thopo, ene etelelele tata. Kasakai ba ta hori mula othomo ono, obama kelle tung, ohu biwankono, ohu biwana yana, leone ene u diran sente, iskana u oru ba kanga di chele, u oru ba kanga naku. Ka hona toataha ilo hori seosetladi reha, hori hori mula othomo ono toataha oberi kesente. Me bilaka pesesu serba la hori sa kakisafano faki hori, rekopa hori, ho bueli diyo ilo hori khatro ba ba tu, ba ba ika kisa hori ene bon thope, hori ame ba twanaleha. Re khatrobe, bon thope ba ba ike meting kanusi, re bere khatrobe li makoko a se politiki. Harasa di realo, re leho na le ba tu ba kana, a thousand, ele ba tu ba, bon thope ba ba ike meting kanusi, moho li makoko a di politiki. Ya ka hakibiwa ka twenty nineteen, erenali forty-eight parties, mara hona katsana mu parlamenting, ba li fourteen only. Seosenasabonsa hori thula, inesa bere kesente ya di thopo. Kasaloke, re seheza mula othomo, meroko pa hori ka tsehe, tsehe, inka eno ele thoko. Le hori, more say, ba lo ebe uwe ya di thopo, ene one thirty ya gouda, kialabo.
Thank you. The sixth speaker, please come forth.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I'm Hotso Cecili, member of the ANC. I stand here to support the bill and say thumbs up to the PR system because that is an infringement of democracy. But at the same time, Chairperson, our view is that this system must not abuse democracy. It should not be used in other terms to rape democracy. Because if an independent has to stand on a PR, then this independent is a person who cannot prove herself to be having a lot of support, we may find that there will be a problem. And normally, these kinds of people who come up as independents come up as a result of the amount of money that they have to pay to stand as independents. Honourable De Beere has made an example of fourteen, forty-eight and only fourteen parties went through. We have gone through the process of independence during local elections. And the reason why there were many independents or there were people who wanted to be independents was because of the amount of money that they were supposed to pay to be registered as independents. Now, in this case, it will be very important that the amount must be very substantial to a point that it will not be easy for anybody to attempt to be an independent. Just to cite an example, if, for example, we have to say five thousand run for a person to be independent and all of us in the house, hundred and fifty as we are seated here, have five thousand runs, it means all of us here qualify to be independents, to be registered. Now imagine the length of the ballot paper when there will be these people together with political parties and so on and so. The same experience of local elections, it was very difficult even for the voters to see where their parties are. And mostly, people take advantage of using the names of parties they know are popular. African so-and-so, African so-and-so, just because there is African National Congress, everybody will start with African, African, African. The reason why they do that is to be first on the ballot paper, but forgetting that that will cause a lot of problems as people go ahead to vote. Now, my concrete proposal, Chairperson, on this one would be anything, it would not be anything less than fifty thousand rand for a person to register as an independent. Two, anyone who registers as an independent must prove record that he is a South African citizen. Three, anyone who registers as an independent must prove that the money he or she has gotten to register is not from any illicit tendencies, not from a drug lot, not from non-South Africans. Because today we see that even non-South Africans are able to, eh, register political parties. And then for purposes of their own. Now, coming to the support, an independent must show at least fifty thousand, must have at least fifty thousand vote, eh, supporters, to show that is an indication that he or she would have a seat come, eh, elections. And if it is fifty thousand, and it happens that an independent should get, say, a hundred thousand, because it is an independent, one body, one person, that person would qualify for only for one seat. There are no running mates here, where a person would say, if I, 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 I am independent and I get a hundred and twenty, my wife will then take the next seat. Or if I am independent, I've won in the province, my wife will go to NCOPE. If a person contests in a region or a province and wins a seat, that person must remain in that region. And they must only contest in one region and one region only, not in many, many more regions. Now, coming to the, eh, signatures of the people who have, who shall have supported. The IEC must be able to verify the signatures as well as the ID numbers of those people. Because today, non-South Africans have ID numbers, non-South Africans are now able to register political parties, are now able to re-stand as independents. That is the rape of democracy, eh, Chairperson. Eh. Eh, the, the last, my last point, the, the independent should prove beyond reasonable doubt that the deposit paid is not accumulated through illicit means. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Thank you.
Kiala boha, amudula stulo, na li na laka ki Hotso Cecili, kiala lo kala ANC, ibile kibatla kaka lusa hori ki amohela la leho du balala lemo la molautomo warona. Kalabaga la kia hori systeme eno ya PR, eh, ki ona demokrasi ya roh na. Eh, kibatla kaka lusa fano faka ha ya bo ntrope, bo ntrope ba ba i ki mezing kano si, eh, hori, eh, haba i kaka hisa jaka ba ba i ki mezing kano si. E tshwanezo hori inne taba, e muhyana rachwanzo hori ra ra bo la ma tata ma nga arna lo ona. Kamanzo ma we, ra yizo hori kanga ya ma di, ah ho ting bo ntrope ba ba i ki mezing kano si ba tshwanezo hori pa tele. Eh, ba di aho dioda, a go bufe longa, kaka tropa misa hori, di pehlo lo enasi di ntsenyang. Eh, kasekai, ya ka si buisa si fitina seklasu sezo hori, ki laha na li forty-eight thousand, eh, ba ba i ki mezing kano si, hori ba tropiwe, ho ba hoza na only fourteen, motenha parliamente. Sene sa bu sa hori thula ha, ine ri beri ki sa, ine na le ba tata. Eh, mutwa iposa hori, hori ngar na li bo i, bo ntrope ba ba i ki mezing kano si, ba banzi tatajana. Kaza lo, ilo hori, hori la la di lo sente la ka tshwane lo. Re kaka rata hori, eh, ba tropa ba ba kaka hisa hori ba tropiwe, re ba ko pe hori ho we, ba pa tele ma di, a kana eh, five thousand ya bo ntrope ba ba i ki mezing kano si. Haru dira sengai, rohli ya ka haru le motenha hori lo fano fa, mongoli mongana anali five thousand. Hori hori rohli re tshwaneleha na hori gi stariva. Ene innaku tata ka hori, sene sa seklavis dira hori, re nelele na ne la ba tropi, delele delele tata ka hori le mongoli monga, ona leone, chelite ehu, eho te ya ba tiba. Kaza lo ke, slusere ba ta hori seklaka hisa fano, ne kibatla kaka hisa leho proposa hori ho ti, moto adwele ma di, aka senta, a senta fatlasa ka fifty thousand. Banabale banzi mona konye fitina kalabaga la hori mongoli monga na kona kona leone chelite ehu. Ibe le re kaka misa hori fifty thousand eh, hamo tshwaneleone. Inne ma di, a ilo hori ka, bono ka di tsalata bu fer, fer jaka, a di draxe, hoza a tshwane mo ba tomba iseng ma Africa bohwa. Kaza lo, haru ka dira jalo, re kaka kona kola la di lo, kaka, kaka se la e tshwanezeng sente. Ibe le, haba na li, ba fitila zitpa lo ya di vote zo ho ti di abataha, aru kasekai, motwa ting ha ti, ki fifty thousand ya di vote, aba kriya hundred thousand. Eh, eseteng ehu ke tsakhileng, eska ya ne wa motwa bo la tele, eska ya ne wa motwa ho ti nyama, sa diwa ka otsa fifty thousand, hoza mo ka to, uri le, oki eme lango otsa, zedi zedi ke tsakhileng. Haru ka dira jalo, Chair, kaka kona kola la di lo sente. Rala boha.
Thank you. The seventh speaker.
Uh, thank you, Chairperson of the session. My name is Tavizolom Simanga. I'm residing here in Gronstadt. I'm standing here in my individual capacity as the member of the South African Communist Party. I will make some few, uh, submissions without wasting your time, Chair. Eh, I really support the amendment bill and support the PR system, which must be run in terms of democratic procedures, and the system must remain fair to the public and South African citizens. And also welcoming all individuals to stand as independents to comply with the court order. That is currently imposing certain things in our democratic dispensations. Now, when it comes to this point of practicality to run the elections, I will kindly request the, the component structure in the country that is responsible for the process of the elections. They must try to apply their obsequious level of running the processes accordingly. Because we have observed something, people that have been naturalized as the citizens of South Africa, especially in the SADC region, are starting to manipulate their status when it comes to destabilizing our country. In a disguised mentality of saying that the solidarity of being the SADC members and the coming here in South Africa for settlement due to some setting, arises in relation to international issues. Now, when it comes to the administrative issues in the IEC level, the IEC mustn't find itself in an impossible situation when it is creating or drafting the ballot papers. And also, we must be proca- eh, the IEC must also be precautional when it comes to the issues of the budget of the state that will be utilized. Because the moment we start in to allow certain things, there is budget constraints and budget implications there. Then so, I would request the committee to be observant on certain decisions. And the, the criticalness that must never affect the constitutional imperatives and the will of the people. So far, also, I would emphasize the, the point that has been raised by Honorable Executive Mayor of Muhati Komreti Beere by saying that reviewing qualifications of the registrations, it is also the most important factor that needs to be attended. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Kiala boha, libisolaka ki Tavizolom Simanga. Uh, ki twamona mokaka municipality, mi ki sitosa S A C P. Impa ki e mi mona ka ma ikutloaka, iseng amohakoaka. Ki dumelana li bilena ka holtla holtla, ki tseeta li zilaena ya tsebezoo, etu yonka oru ki PR system, eh, li zila ya tsebezoo, eh, hemali demokrasi. Mi ki, ki amohela hape, zilaena hovani i, idumelana, liketo ya leh holtla. Ba ki sa hori di nto di etwe, ka zila esna liye eme. Impa la hodi yolo, rolo ke la husheba, zila ya tsebezoo, etla la telewa, ba ki sa hukema, liketo ina leh holtla. Mi ki ku pa, bo se ba na li za maiso, tabi ya ri cheto. Hori ba isit ntoka zilaene, pa iseng, ha hulu hulu bashabe ka li tholeen chocho. Ba ahi ba na ba tshwana hin, zedi, ba zionka oru ki di naturalized citizens. Ba se mbafuma ni mangolo abudulo amona Africa bohwa, fe la kale bakala, ha hulu hulu ka hovani ilidi tsoza ma ba tuwa SADC. Ka pana ore ba sebedisa ma emo abona, aoba ba, hovani mangolo Africa bohwa, katila esane, paha lanka hu za maisa, ta ba ta bo na se ma nyofo nyofo. Ba iki za ika ri ki ba ahi ba mona. I see iluke la, husheba ka li tholeen chocho, taba za ballot paper, hori iske ya, ba katila ehu ba tuwa sa to, iu kisi sa, hape husha yoli taba di chelite. Ra zwa hori di cheto, di ba ta chelte nga da, mi ha huso iki za ile, bo ngreten. Re kana rafuma na hori, ribale ma tata aua chelite. Komiti li ona, iona ina ya parliamente, eku tuwa hori, ishabe ka li tholeen chocho, liketo ze entwe, hori diske za tuntheza, liketo, diske za tintheza, ma iki mezezo a demokrasi le mulawamo teo. Ki dumelana, li si buise itse, hulu ke la husha yoka li tholeen chocho, ma emo a tuto, li di pehelo zedi, ma bapi, li bo ngretenba i ki mezing. Kiala boh.
Thank you. The eighth speaker.
Thanks, Chair, thanks, Honorable Chair, and good morning to all members who are in this house and the public as well. My name is Munyato Mahlati. I'm the Provincial Secretary of Coside in the First State. I would like us to also deal with other issues that relates to this bill. For starters, I know you are here on the issue of the bill. But it's also important to look at the, the feeders into this process of people standing for elections and having more people standing for elections. And some of those are issues that relates to high unemployment rate. Some of those are issues that relates to students that are not in teacher institutions. And many others that makes some of us to be staying at home. And the only easy thing that we can participate in are politics. So as and when you go back and engage with your colleagues, please raise this matter as well to say, we also need to find ways to deal with the feeders into the system of, eh, people ending up standing as, eh, as in, as, um, candidates. There, we, we have laws in our country, and one of the law that is important to me is the Labor Relations Act. And the Labor Relations Act has got in it a built-in mechanism that do not allow proliferation of trade unions. That do not allow that somebody can just decide in the morning to establish a trade union. So I, I think that is something that is also important, that it should reflect in the bill. So that people are not encouraged to just wake up one morning and go and stand for elections. Because if we get to that level, we'd have a situation that is not manageable. I'll avoid repeating what has been said earlier in terms of a bigger ballot, eh, paper. However, given the situation that we are in, where the Constitutional Court have made a ruling that this is what should happen. Maybe at some point, we may need as a country to reflect whether the, our constitution needs to be reviewed in some areas. But that will be a discussion for another day. Eh, but at this point in time, the Constitutional Court has made a ruling that the laws should be amended. And as Coside, we believe that the constitution as it is, until we decide to rediscover it, still stands and we need to respect it. As a result, we support the bill as it stands. And in supporting the bill, we believe that it will address the, the current flaws that are currently existing in the government, governance system, as well as the legislative system. We, we believe that compliance should also be speeded up that by next year, around June so, the, this process should have been concluded so that, eh, by twenty twenty-four, we don't get, eh, you know, the, the elections being delayed because we had not complied. We do not believe that the Constitutional Court was saying there should be a wholesale review of the current elect- electoral laws. It was saying address this specific issue. And as Coside, we support the need for that specific issue to be addressed. And we believe that there should be very minimal disruptions to the current electoral system. So it should not be kind like a, a wholesale kind of, eh, 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 review. But there's also inherent dangers in the issue of independent standing. Because we, we are in alliance with the ANC and the S A C P, that's not a secret. And we know how ANC deputies are held accountable. But we do not know how independents candidates are held accountable, by who, where, at which platform. And we believe that that issue may need to be raised and be dealt with. Because the electoral system should be designed in such a way that it only benefits the people and only the people, not individuals that get the opportunity to be elected. So that's in, that's a very important element that we believe should be addressed in this, in this process. But we believe that the current PR system is okay, it should be kept as it is. But just address this thing, this issue that has been, eh, the court have said that we, it should be, eh, addressed. Eh, if, I, I, I have a whole submission written here, I'll, I'll try to find an email address to send it to you so that I don't waste time talking through all these fifteen slides that I'm having here. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. You can bring forth, you can liaise with the team. Um, one of the team, the support staff will come to you to take that submission. Thank you.
Kiala idume di sa, libisolaka ki Munyato Mahlati, ki twa blue fanteni, ki mongodi wa provinsi, wa krosatu, ki dubenana li bilena. Impa ki na hana horu, na li di nto zedi, zeka tu kosa roke la hushaba na lezo na. Zey nyalela na li, ntaine u buankaya na, e hushaba na li yo na bilinena. Mi, ya, ntabu shlo koku, holtla ba li palu eki za ile, ya bo ngreten. Mi ha hulu hulu sana stlo ba kwa, ki ba itu di ba motu, atre di len, di tu to saha impa sa mo sebezii. Ba tuwa sa sebezii, le ba tuwa duzing hai, ba tuwa nganse na ili mu ye taor motu, afuma ni mo sebezii, kahou, komiti na li ke la hushaba tu. Renali me la o mona na hin ya ro, na mi mulawoku, ratang ha hulu lukapa, o, oma ikutlo nga ka, ki mulawo wa ba sebezii, o si yonki Labor Relations Act. Mi huya kama la o ona wa ba, wa, 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 wa kama no sa ba sebezii, ha ho motu ya dumele zung hori. Atu efe lauseng, abasanta, re na na ki ta iki za, mo ki ta ika la, mo katoa ka ba sebezii. Ki naana horu limona di cheto, hulu ke la hova yolo, mulawo ma di cheto hori. Motuwa skatsuwa fe lausani, hu kujo ta ba horu, motuwa skatsuwa fe lausani, abasanta re na ki ta ba ngreten. Katila yolo re tla ku ba di, pampirza baloto, se delele, re dumelana lo hori. Leha kua na re dumelana, ta baina ya hori, eh, keto ya holtla, rolo ke la hui ananela. Mo shomu, rolo ka hana koe inze ya reki ri sheba mulawamo teo, dumelana, le, le mulawamo teo, impa, mo shomu rolo ke la hushaba hori. Utho re tu se, ho, riskera izadi poso, sa di nto zewu ki se ngikubileka zona, ho na mona seki di, seki biwaleka zona. Mi reka tu so ha hulu hulu ki harika sheba, hori re ngole mulawamo teo, ru lu ki lu ki se mona lemani, ma ba bili taba sa di cheto. Taba ena ya, ya, ya bilena rekopa leona kajunle na, iluke la hupa tla kiswa, ka holtla holtla kama ko kana, katen, mo shomu na konyona ina, limon setla, i be se petez. Hori reka twenty twenty-four ha u di cheto, oskana ti di cheto, di emi soha nyano sanza, na li di nto zewu ki di, ki sa, ma bapi li mulawo di cheto. Hovani, le holtla la di cheto, le holtla haline leza keto, halie aru fe tu le mu la u di cheto ka fe. Lize hushajoo monalemani, kaho hara shebe monalemani fe la hori. Ritleriskera sinyana ko, ritleribe na kumbakenza di chetho ka 2024. Hunali ntwena kotsi ewoki bona, runarli SACP, runarli krosatu. Rehemali SACP li ANC. Me ha hunali di poso kapo, hunali bubudi kapali in. Hunali mou I C ilbelezin hori. Di thotho nan li, di thotho salukan, kapase iturinkapa, tabu isarbu salukan. Dinali mou di swanteng, di lotla le wati. Me hatu nyabo na. Batwa ike mezing, bochetengba ike mezing, batu thla li ya omankaye, obani ba ike mezing. Kaho kidume lana, li zilainashebezo ya PR impa ki hori. Itlo honohulu kisa di thotho, la singilokota udi luki se. Impa ruluke la hushaba, lematata nyana okapa di thotho utse waya wayan, ke te uki se inkiwileka zona. Kinali thotho ngatene ki bata udivua, kinali di slidese se ngatema di slidese se uki ta di rumela. Hori litle litso orasona ki difi, kata baka ta ubuluka na.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers for the second round as we have concluded with the first round? Can I kindly note hands for those speakers that will want to come? And this will be the second last round. So the hands that I'm going to note would be the last rounds. You can come through. When I note hands, kindly make your way to the chairs in the middle, based on the number or order that I would have given you. You are the first speaker, you are the second speaker sir, you are the third speaker. You are the fourth speaker, black cap. Philip, you are the fourth speaker. You are the fifth speaker with a black jacket. You are the sixth speaker with a green cap. You are the second speaker, yes. You are the eighth speaker there with a red sweater. You are the ninth speaker, you are the tenth speaker. So this is the last ten hands that will be speaking in this round. Kindly note, when you come to the podium to speak, kindly be indicative of who you are, where you are coming from, which organization you are representing. If you are not representing any organization, FBO, CBO or any you indicate, and therefore furnish us with whether you accept the amendment bill or you reject, therefore put your submission forward. And please, can we kindly not be intimidating to those who would be speaking in the podium as and when they speak? Let's practice tolerance. Thank you, the first speaker, you can come forth.
Yes, good morning Chairperson. Mine is Mthandekin Tlapo. I'm the member of the African National Congress here in Mukaga and responsible for the branch of the ANC called ZR Mahaban Branch in government structures is word four D. Firstly, let me express my appreciation for the manner in which, after the court has passed that judgment, both government and legislature, without any waste of time, embarked on this particular process. I want to appreciate that particular intervention that we are making. Secondly, I've got more than five issues that I want to raise, but I want to limit to two, most of which have been covered by other speakers that came forward. Firstly, I want just to reemphasize this point that this particular portfolio committee must not really think twice when processing this bill to its finality in terms of very, very stringent measures in regulating qualifications of any independent elections contestant. That this particular process must show that the parliament is at work both in terms of defending the voters, the electorate. Because once the ballot paper, for example, on the bill, once going through, is developed and is confusing the voters, potentially, we are abusing the voters. Therefore, the bill or any act must not try to enter that particular terrain. It will confuse our electorates. Therefore, the intention is to make the measures very, very stringent, applying section thirty-six of the Constitution by imposing those limitations and qualifications in that particular bill. Two, it is very important that when going through this particular process of the Amendment of Electoral Act, it may not be the last journey today. Therefore, going to the 2024 general elections, my view would be it must begin to ring immediately, if indeed further amendments may be required to deal with whatever consequences that may arise as a result of the application of the Amendment Act. I therefore with this particular comment, support this particular bill as it is, but ensure that you limit strongly whatever things that may cause damage to the voters. Thank you Chairperson.
Thank you.
Dumelan, libisolaka ike Mthandekin Tlapo, kitwa mukhatwa ANC mona Mukaga. Ki teza bilina er buankaya nakajenu. Me ki bata hori le boha, jolo ka muso le nklia keza mulao. Hori ibe litkadi le sebezu enana, haufinya na. Nklaka ya bili, ki hori. Sebezo nyalo na jolo ka komiti, hali sa bili ena, kete lo nyayon. Li be, limela o etile ma babi li ma emo kapo mangolo atuto a bochetengba ike mezing. Lonajolo ka parlamente, le tlamewo sebeleza, hutshireleza baheti. Di bampiri za, za di chetho hadia tlamewo, hori hali ente di etwa, di ketele, di ferika nyaba heti. Obani, hona ebaklikifizo ya baheti. Nklaka yubedi, ki hori, li edo nenana, tukiso ya bili enana. Kanawashari, tukiso tse di, hanaku ente za mai. Me kereko pa hori, li se pamewu di ma, nsezo bili ya bili enana. Le shabane hahulu li shirelezo ya baheti, kialibo.
Thank you, the next speaker, can you kindly come forth? We, before you speak, we have made a request that can cellphones kindly be on silent. We all have those important calls that we should make or receive. Therefore, can we kindly, in respecting the meeting, put our phones on silent?
No, thanks Chair. Good morning everyone. Let me take this opportunity to appreciate the opportunity that has been given to us to come and give our views on this important matter, Chair. I would very much quick to say that much of the things that one might have thought of has been already deliberated on by many of the former speakers who has already took to the podium. But I will wish also too to say, in support of the bill in its current form, we must also be careful taking some notes from what Comrade Malatsi has spoken of about maybe at some stage we'll need to revisit again the contents of our constitution. Because to some extent, some of us feel that the constitution is a little bit too much open for manipulation. Because some of the things that people are taking the constitution to court and from time to time be winning by being favored by the setup in the constitution is actually tempering on the importance of the individuals or the parties on the ground outside the constitution. Let me make an example on what I'm trying to say. The issue of the PR which we say we support is calculation to some extent is favoring those who have got less support on the ground than those who have got more support. Because in most of the municipalities, you'll find that some of the parties who had little support will be finding themselves having more seats than even the opposition that has been having at least sizable support during the polls. So that in itself, I think it will need us to go back to it. And I think that is also the reason which necessitated and make people to see reason in taking this bill to court and then for that reason also, they managed to emerge victorious. Let me also talk on the matter of coalition, Chair. On this one, I think Comrade Victoria said a mouthful that it is no way that we can find people waking up or behaving willingly and trying to register for their contestation in the polls when there are no guidelines or determining grounds, which I believe must be very tight in this regard for those to consider them as people or parties. But particularly now we are talking in terms of people that they can be registered to contest the elections. Because if you look at the percentages in terms of how best our constitution has been lenient and accommodating of all because of its democratic makeup, you'll also find that people who have got less than or at most zero comma two-five percent, they've got the representation in parliament. They want seats and then when you go further and check what is a qualification for a seat, it is that you must have forty to sixty votes for you to qualify to get one seat. But if we needed to say we have to be stringent, even though Congress was saying fifty thousand, I believe, as we are suggesting also, that the representation, the consideration of qualification for individuals must also be the same that is being considered when we are dealing with parties. But we'll suggest, even if we can go to say for a person or a party to have a seat in parliament, let it go to seventy or eight hundred votes so that at least we know we can minimize the contestation. Because even if we are discussing on issues of coalition, you can't be discussing with a number of dozens of parties because each and every party or individual will come to present his view and wish for that view to be considered as the best important and all other views. In closing, leadership, we are saying we accepted the bill, but those considerations that must be taken into account truly must be taken into account. I thank you, leader.
Thank you.
Dumelan, kialibo ha munyetsla. Olo refilongo na awa reklo ya mamuna, reseisame ikutwara. Bangatabali thothzani ki bata udivua, du se dibuwé. Impa ki bata hori. Retlamia hori, kisha bisise, tabai ena hahulu. Me renahane kaho ilekula mulao teo hapo. Obani, galina kozedi, reka fumana mula teo, ubulele hahulu. Me ba bamba kankamu nyetla ka tabai ewo. Mshala ki hori, tabai ena ya PR sistemi ewore thyeza. Ishaba la, inali liyeme bakensaa. Batu bana li thyezo enyani, hufita bana li thyezo ingata. Obani, otla fumana hori, ho di maspala, bana li thyezo enyani. Bana li ditulote ingata hufita, bana li thyezo eh hulu. Kaho bili tlamewo hunkasinana, isinahane. Obani, ikawa mapaka eche na, eza hori, bili ketele, isu alahutla. Ki bata bua hapaka tabaya mangolo a dequalification. Retlamia hushaba tabai ena hantla hahulu. Obani, okafumana hori, batu bana li thyezo eh enyani jolo ka zero point two-five. Bana li, bana li bueme edi parlamente. Impa, nagare, bochetengba ike mezing, retlamia ho, ho thwara hantla jolo ka meha di politiki. Me ba bili thyezo eh, eh kabango, eh devote se seventy, wesa se hundred, hori, ba fumane studio. Ki bata kete la ka hori, bini ena rea itheza, fe la kiko pa kamata hori. Lele leshabi si se, ma baka awa fani ngawa na, mona kajunlina, kialibo.
Thank you. Can we have a speaker?
Dumelan, libisolaka ki tulani class. Nklaka yungu fe la, eh to bana li schedule one A. Jola haobala schedule one A mona, serre half of the seats eh mani national assembly, ditlabe di filua ki the independent candidates and then ditlabi twa regional city ha okopanya. Le list of candidates of political parties contesting the nine regions and they shall be referred as regional seats. And B, yate inere, half the seats are filled by candidates from list of candidates of political parties and they shall be referred to as compensatory seats. Juali, kinalabo tatumu ilonghori, independent candidates already sente di baleto ka thoko, ditulote kabante eh hulu. Obana, hushaba ditulonse four hundred. However, half, yate ki two hundred ditlaba di regional city. Half yate hundred, eh itetza ebah, eh the independent candidate. Kamanzama obafa undue advantage. Another thing, tabai ena di party political system enali historical background. Juali na, ke tsua mona moylonhori, eto fragmenta, lintzula watuwa wato. Moylonhoru, tafumana or political party eh winning, hayasahono ngadiketo. Jualaka ngaketo ya, ya lefati, wakana lefati lukutela watu, mbabatu jua. Juali kinekiri, eh the independent candidates, hadiskeza fuwa di hundred seats eh, di mpede conteste jualaka di political parties. Kamanzama oba oskrepuwé forty-five mono eh, o schedule one A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nali nalaka ki tulani class, kialibo ha. Kinekerata hori, tcharisa nklake na liyona ya schedule one A. Schedule one A, igua fana faka hori, eh halofoya di city, eh sa national assembly, iswana zahora, ene za bon tropi mba ba ike meza nganusi. Eh mo hora, hora tedyunze di salanke sa regional seats. And then B yate, eh ere half eh we ise tse nyona, etlanaya di bon tropi mba ba ike meza nganusi, ba ba jua.
Askis, askis. I think the speaker was speaking in English. So therefore, we require the other version of it.
So I must be, this speaking in Siswana, so, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. In English, oh yeah, it got me very confused because I heard some two languages. Somewhere I noted you were speaking in Siswana. All right, so this Mr. Tulani Class was mentioning that he is wanting to make a point from the schedule, schedule one A, which refers to half of the seats that are actually reserved for the national party. And then they say then for the independent candidates, the remaining seats will be for the regional seats. And then the B part, that is, then it says the half would be for the independent candidates and the remaining ones, they say, will be for the compensatory seats. So now, to make an example, when we're speaking about four hundred of them, it means that half of this will be obviously two hundred and then as we go along with the calculation, we will then have a hundred reserved for the regional and then regional seats and then half will actually be not for the individual independent running candidates, which gives them an undue advantage in this particular program. So basically then, what we want to say here is that the political parties which, who will win then will simply be an indicative of the fact that the... win then will simply be an indicative of the fact that the hundred seats will then not belong to them. So and I'm just raising these two points in a similar form to say that this is one of the aspects which is a cause for concern, which would like us that it be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the podium.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair of the session. My name is Philip Hanjaro. I am representing the South African Communist Party in the province of the Free State. This organization asked me to remind everyone that during this month we are celebrating the International Women's Day and we want to urge everyone to follow the theme of this year, which is about breaking the bias that feeds into the operation of women internationally. Let's play a role. Our submission in relation to the matter before us is that firstly, we support the amendment bill to the extent that the proposed amendments will assist us in making sure that we ultimately don't compromise the ability to establish stable governments that are based on the democratic expression of the will of the people. That's the basis upon which we are supporting the bill. Our view, our submission is that the current multi-party system of democratic government is practical and that it also ensures commendable proportional representation of the demographics of our country in parliament and legislatures. As it stands, we support the continuation of the proportional representation system in the country and in order to ensure that we bring our legal regime in line and in sync with the letter and spirit of the constitution, the SSCP also supports in the province also supports the amendment to allow participation of independent candidates in the electoral processes as directed by the Constitutional Court. In terms of our additional submissions, Chair, we are saying that welcoming this amendment of participation by independent candidates, it should not lead to diluting and compromising the integrity of our electoral processes, both administratively and substantively. We do know that there are those that always try underhand tactics. That's why we are recommending that the sources of monies that would be utilized by even by independents to register for elections, they have to be traceable to avoid instances and situations where the money, those who are rich, those who might go and even infiltrate other organizations to identify individuals, fund them to regain their electoral capacity and support. So traceability of resources of those who stands independently is something that the committee needs to take seriously. And administratively, the last local government elections chair had about twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six thousand spoiled papers. That is only four parties in our national parliament managed to secure votes above that number. So we're saying administratively, we must be careful not to complicate the electoral process to make it as hard as it already is because that would mean that the number of spoiled papers will increase even more, which will also affect the expression of the will of the people. That's why we require that one. In terms of the criteria, Chair, we are saying the criteria for participation even by independent candidates should be anchored primarily on proven support on the ground by citizens and should also be based on a quota. And it must apply, the same criteria must apply for both entities and independent individuals. On the allocation of seats, we're saying the criteria should ensure that participation by minorities and independent candidates must not be anti-majoritarian in nature but must embrace the constitutionally supported democratic principle of majority rule that reflects the will of the people. And lastly, Chair, we are saying that if there are those that may not necessarily make it into legislatures and government, there are extra parliamentary processes that must be supported and anchored to ensure that they continue to participate in those processes and activities of government. Lastly, I must leave with you with a problem that you should respond to. In instances where an independent candidate makes it to the legislature or to parliament, we all know that death is inevitable and such a person passes away, what becomes the mechanism of making sure that there is replacement in that sense? Because you don't have traceability of who actually voted for this specific independent individual. How do you handle that in a manner that avoids turning the country to be perpetually in electoral or in elections mode? That's something that we require that the committee considers seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
[speaking in Afrikaans] 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 [speaking in Afrikaans]
Hanjaro.
Hanjaro. Hanjaro. Yeah. Hanjaro. Sorry about that. Next, we can listen again. And then now, Ronar re ba emedi ba re amachala bili enu e fapela cha rona. So it's a free state, it's mono mo. And then, you know, you can tell us about the fact that we're more than a re amachala bili, I'm not going to tell you all, and you're going to hear what you're doing to hold on. Because I'm ready to hear what you're doing to tell us about that. Because I'm ready to hear this is a true life, I'm a democracy, and I'm a man who is a man. I'm ready to hear it. It's not a muscle. I'm ready to hear it. But it's a body, 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 it's a
Which is exacerbated by a plethora of issues. One being long waiting hours as a result of long ballot papers. And secondly, the other reason being high level of illiteracy. If the majority of South Africans were literate enough, they will be able to take a considerable time perusing the ballot paper. They have to enlist the assistance of an additional personnel to assist them to go through a ballot paper, which then would result in them taking a long time as it was expected. Sometimes, our people get discouraged by long waiting times. And most of our people are from poor backgrounds. We all know that the IEC is unable to provide catering to the electorate. And then most of our electorates have got a variety of ailments, which would require them not to stay long without having anything to take into their stomachs. And as such, we would find people collapsing and some dying in queues waiting to cast their vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kialiboha, libis olaka ki hansen ke du, ki tswamani streken safes le dabi. Me ki sitosa ANC, ki dumelana li biliena kahulle hulle. Me ki thuhule talakhotla lena hutlamona, hutlo shebanali tabayena kahui dia maji. Ma satsi amahsano feela pili huditu nduwa nsa maji, le satsi labutlo kaha hulu. Le kitika ngkapa lona, le shebanili tabase la saisa hala muzi wa shavil. Nakonye fitile moba tchoboruna baile mbabula wakasituku balo na democracy. Ki tabua feela kantaili mwui ya ekhi enwaya wayan, ya bonkhetemba ike meti. Bonkhetemba ike meti habatswani li batuwa ilin ditosa zamehaya di politiki, wani ba ita ela me ha huna di manifesto se balalela merlu kenalokomele tabayew, wani senasi kaba kahuru hube le matata kaha ba haona moba taika rabe la tinga ba isa di poso. Ki tabua hape kataba ya huvota li seka ba kwan ki di ballot paper se telele. Re ati ba ma satsi nga na huna li hutso afahu bohu, batuwa sebatu afahu vote ha hulu hulu, ntezio ngaka horu ki vote apathie. Me senasi ba kwa ki mila emilelele ewu batuwa emi yonaa, habato vote of manuka nakumwi, batuwa hapi la hanti le baimana kui telele. Ati ba R I C hi fani kadijo, ki kahoka nakunu manu ba tuwa ba idibana kapabashwe la milenia huvota. Unale batuwa ba ngata ba vuta, ngbalu kenan huvuta, ba satsi bimhubahala. Me kasa na sesa huvutlo kehehuri, hube le ba sebe ti ba 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 ngata, boyatlo ba thusa mhoru bakhone hukecha. Kati le ine pa hiti, hape huna li tabaya huvutlo ba li di ballot paper se telele, se batamhoru tchadke te na kui telele anza di sheba, alika obana huluke la hukechama. Min khatse ose pedi ditlaba kahuri, batuwa singe na kui telele banse bali milenia huvota, ilin ntezio sa horu batsoafe huvota kialiboh.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Good day. Good afternoon. My name is Samuel Lichesa and I come from the ANC in Fezile Dabi. And we are supporting the amendment of the electoral bill. We as the ANC have the view that the PR system ensures that parties will appeal to their core supporters rather than a small so-called swing voters in marginal seats. And we are also arguing that the PR delivers fairer treatment of minority parties and independent candidates. And under the PR, fewer votes are wasted as more people's preferences are taken into account. We are also of the view that the PR encourages voter turnout and reduces apathy. We also believe that PR rarely produces an absolute majority for one party. However, it could be argued that PR also ensures greater continuity of government and requires greater consensus in policymaking. In instances where, for example, an independent candidate requires 50,000 votes to get a seat in the National Assembly, and then the candidate gets a total of 70,000 votes, the IEC has to find a way to find use for the remaining 20,000 votes, which we believe the IEC itself must be regulated and be treated in such a fair and just manner. We as the ANC also believe the FPTA system cannot be relied upon to provide a legislature reflecting the various shades of opinion expressed at the election and it does not necessarily place in power a government supported by the minority of the electorate. Also, the system is a winner takes it all system and that can deny representation in legislature and to a certain extent, levels of minority opinion and can provide large differences in the number of representatives elected with only a small difference in the number of votes obtained through the operation of the winning bonus. Lastly, it is necessary, absolutely necessary so, to have all levels of minority of opinions represented in a limited number of legislatures. Failure to have minority opinion represented denies the democratic rights of the minorities. And just on a final point, that my fellow comrades have also missed, we as the African National Congress are also proposing that in the event that an elected public official passes away, the options of a by-election happening in that ward or in that community must also be scrapped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kialiboha, libis olaka ki Samuel Lichesa, ki tswamani streken safes le dabi. Me ki dumelana li biliena. Ki runarli ANC re dumelana li taba huri, si la ya sebezo ya buheti, ya PR yesa huri, hube li ti yeso e matla feti si chabing mababili poso, hurufilhele weli basna ngbue mediba kana kui fiti mbanawa sa khoni, wali mwe medimuso. Ba fuma na horu banale mwe medihaha hulu hulu, me kha lo eminyani le batuwa ike meti. Me kati le jolo wani PR, sebezo na PR, i bata huri ha hudume la kapoha hanana li taba, hube li palu e ke sehili kiso asbe sa horu ki greater consensus. Tabayena ya huri mutho mungharisa muthala, hube le batuwa dikiti se mashume amahsano, se omutu huri hai li mkhetengya ike meti. Aba afuma nasilo parliamente, me ilor motye onafuma ni dikiti se mashume asupile. Hutlo ba li di vote se mashume ama bedi, se mashume dikiti, se mashume ama bedi, 20,000. Se omutuena asato di sebe di sandrana hori. I E C ibeyo ona eluke la ngweza ketro mababili di vote se osela shwan. Si la ine sebezo onajolajena, ha sebezi hanti le hobe ni motuwe wili nyana ya asutzi. Ki ye na isa ndiketoka hulle hulle, me ha utwa hale ma ikuto adi ame kha lo eminyani, mo holi batuwa ike meti. Hube shokwa huri, batuwa me kha lo eminyani le batuwa ike meti ndibona, batle ba utwa hale poso huri huske hatu ntezoa democracy. Harla ntezyanya nyautlatela, ntezyanya hutlatela. Harla batuwa wani hamu mungweza hala huri, motu ya hetu ilin mkhetengya ike meti, hasa li muso abathoka hala. Recopa horu ska bali di hetu, tabayewo ona hohangua iska ba timusbe li di hetu.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Thanks Honorable Chair. My name is Kinaliman Fukunti. I'm from the Free State, from the region called Dijelubutwa. I'm a member of the African National Congress. Chair, I am going to present what we believe as the ANC. We accept the bill, Chair. We are also saying that, Chair, the independent must be treated equally as the political parties. They must be treated the same as political parties. The Constitutional Court obliges Parliament to make changes to the Act to allow independent to contest against parties in national and provincial elections. It does not force us to change the legislation. It only says that we need to be accommodative to the independent. But Chair, all of us were aware that we had just from the local government election last year on the 20th of July. It was a nightmare in terms comes to the brutal apathy. Maybe I need to start with the I E C. The I E C was not that ready to run those elections. We are not even sure when the COVID is going to go away, Chair. We are all aware that it has been extended again to the next month. Now, we are faced with many challenges in South Africa. But what we are saying, Chair, in the country is that we had a system of the PR that has been very effective, that has made us to have the free and fair elections. No one has ever challenged that the PR was unfair. Now, we are saying we are sticking to the system of the PR system quota. If we are going to change and make sure that the system is not free and fair, we will have a problem of people who will be taking the government to court, even the I E C, and the elections logisticals will be the nightmare, Chair. At the moment, all the parties are paying 200,000 a deposit for national and 45,000 for provinces for the legislatures. What we are pleading to the committees is that the independent must be treated the same. And after all this, after all these parties have won one seat, they have their deposit if they won one seat. Now, we are saying independent, independent is one person. We are saying it must be the same with independent. If we are agreeing to say the independent must be included as we are supporting the bill, they must pay the same amount of money, Chair. And the money must be looked into because we don't know where the money is gonna come from. We have just as Parliament of South Africa, the Parliament has approved the bill that speaks to the disclosure by political parties in terms of their funding. So the same law must be applicable to the independent. They must disclose where they get their funding from so that the process is free and fair to everybody, Chairperson. We are also saying that the independent are unable to account to anyone. As they get in there, they'll be accountable to themselves. They don't have laws, they don't have policies that will be guiding them. And as we are said that we are freshly from the local government, it's a nightmare in local government to run the municipalities because of the coalitions. It will be lot of parties that are coming. We are not only speaking to independent, but we are also to say to those parties that are not currently in legislatures and national at the current moment, they must also be treated the same. Chair, we are saying it is going to be very difficult to run the country with many coalitions and many small parties. We are also saying to you, Chair, and the committee, that we need to look into systems that will help us because the constitution of the country is the supremacy law that governs the country. And we have not come to the point where we have changed the constitution to accommodate, to change the PR system. Even though the PR system in local government is still a problem. So we are supporting the bill, Chair, but we are saying we remain with the PR system. The quota must be the same for both independent and the parties, Chair. We thank you.
Thank you.
Dumelang, libis olaka ki Kinaliman Fukunti, ki tswa makhadlowa ANC. Ki mama na kere re tesa bili, me kere bonkhetengba ike meti, batla me ha hutsoara hanti le jolo kaha mehaya di politiki itsoaro. Le hotla la mula woteo, li dumelana dipetuwa hu mula w. Imba, haliso kameli huri, hube li dipetuwa hu ki tswa mula w. Le ati ba huri, silimun se fitileni kere tsohu, di hetoza le hai. Me riboni ba hetuwa ba ngata basina taba li di hetu, banale vote apathie. Riboni hape lo re I E C nesa ike meteza. Harati be lo re na COVID itla fele ning dolo kaha riboni, isai kelele jona kohu filhele kahudi ning etla. Hape kere sistemia PR is sebeza hanti. Me inetifaza di heto za lukru ilen za snanliemi. Kahou kere muso u dilonzo sebe di sa sistemia PR. Tabenyia chela de kere, bonkhetemba ike meti batla me ha huli fa chela de le kanin li mehaya di politik. Feela harati be horu na bonkhetemba na ba ike meti, batla esmana ka e chela de ewu. Kahou batla me hotla me ha hoba limila wya atenu lo. Huri reti be horu na chela de na ya bonkhetemba ike meti itwa ka e. Bonkhetemba ike meti haba ika rabe le hu mangapomang, habana melao, habana di police. Kahou hotla me hube li melao edileng hau tla shebanili tabaya bon. Hutlo ba buima huu zamaisa muso. Dolo kaha se riboni muso ngala hai huri. Hu hutata huu zamaisa di taba kalaba kala mehaya emi ngata le bonkhetemba ike meti. Le hao le jolo kere tesa bili, me muso ozelepele ka sistemia PR, kialiboh.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No, thank you very much, Chair. Namely, I am Hotom Fukeng. I'm a citizen of Mukaka in Waten specifically. I'm from the ANC Youth League of Bitamukaba. I'm a member of the ANC of Winimandera and Solimachango. But however, Chair, I'm here to represent my own personal submissions. I accept to a certain proportion that amendment of the bill in regards to suggested framework of a PR system. But I'm very much reserved on the amendment for participation of independent candidates. Now, most of the previous speakers, Chair, have taken my points and have delivered them eloquently. So I'll just be very quick. The PR system in its current form seeks to ensure that every corner of South Africa, irrespective of race, gender, or creed, whether a minority or majority, has a proportional representation in either a municipal council, a provincial legislature, or parliament. That is why, Chair, for an example, we are able to have small parties that represent different religious views in parliament. The party-based system due to the makeup of the party structures, my party in particular, the ANC, has what we call branches, which are world-based and present in present in almost, if not all, worlds in South Africa. Ensuring that views of ordinary citizens from all walks of life are equally represented in one organization. As political parties pick MPs from all provinces to ensure all provinces are represented, ensuring equality in parliament. Now, Chair, the push of independent candidates on a national scale in a country which has had four hundred years of certain groups being sidelined through colonialism and further entrenched by apartheid up until 1994. It will be disingenuous for us to allow independent candidates to have direct access to be voted into parliament in a country deemed as the most unequal in the world because they will not be representing the broader society. Also, the idea that independent candidates are not prone to being controlled by outside proxies or being captured, as they say in political corners, is not viable because it is much easier to capture an individual than a political part. Independent candidates who likely lead to billionaires or multinational companies put in limitless amounts of money into their profite candidates for campaigning in order to influence parliamentary bills to push their own capitalistic agendas, which will infringe on the sovereignty of this country. And that is my submission, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dumelang, kialibwa mudilasjulo, libis olaka ki Hotom Fukeng. Me ki sitosa ANC Youth League. Ki mimona hoda laisa ma ikuto ak. Ki rata huri, ki tesa biliena, ntezyanya wai buwa ngasistemia PR. Di PR systemi, itesa bwe mediba mehaya eminyana muso ilin kahou ki tesa. ANC inali makala, hulle di wadi nza ona. Me sena sesa buneti ba huri, batu bohle, ba bali bwe medi di tabenza zamehsoya muso le parliamente. Hau twa tabenyia bonkhetengba ike meti. Bona hakiboni balu kenan hobe li filhele lo ewu tuliling hube parliamente. Hobe ni habano emela ma ikuto abo tse kaha gana. Ki bona sena ili tebezo ke ke nyato la bi. Ki bona dumeloya bonkhetengba ike meti, itlo libisa huu batuwa na li li chela de di billione, huri ba zetele chela de, batuwa ba ike meti ngabo mu huri ibe bonkhetengba ike meti. Me sena se tlo tla se sitisa zamehsoya democracy kaha gana hayaru, kialiboh.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Thoma Basa. A member of the African National Congress. Chapter two of the Constitution of the Country on political rights says everyone has a right to stand for political office and if elected, to hold that office. The Freedom Charter, which was adopted in 1955, in its preamble, says, "There is no government can justly claim the authority unless it is based on the will of the people." Chair, we accept the bill and understand that it seeks to ensure that independent candidates contest the elections, both in the provincial and national level. And we agree that our democracy is matured. But Chair, the bill should ensure that independent candidates are being scrutinized by the community and the communities have opportunity to object to the spacing or their standing into the office. The second issue, Chair, like any other political parties, independent candidates should be bound by the electoral code of conduct. The independent candidates need to meet the same electoral vote threshold as political parties. Example, they must receive the same required percentage for their votes. Chair, it is important that the independent candidates, we look into where they get their money because we don't want international companies and NGO to come and control our country. But most importantly and lastly, we'd like to propose that the committee must also play oversight over the I E C. In the last elections, we saw that the I E C could not match those elections. And if we put independent candidates, it's going to be very difficult to work for the I E C. So as we move to elections, it is important that you play oversight role and make sure that I E C is ready to run those elections. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Li na la me ki tabo ma Basa, na kilo lokola ANC. And then ki ba kialiboha mudilasjulo, honale chapter iya mula woteo warona wanaja, ubua kora mongole mwongwe. Onale tshanele ya hui kakisa hona mukhopen kora aga akhona hona mudirua mo office in enzenjano. And then the Freedom Charter, lo ne ibuayalo koreha, hona motu opa okananga li tata li taoro, fa asai le kelo la le hui newa ki maloko asetaba. Kajalo haribu akabun tropen baba ike meti nganosi, baba tropiwa kora ba ze ne mo kokuanu bo setaba, mo holi mo deka kota topa mula w. Re batka kota misa kora mula w, tomo onu o, o kota misi se senka kora ba tshoba nova, ba cha tubi si si tse. Koro tota ba tshanele ka huri, bakakhona kute na moteng ibile maloko asetaba. Anale tshanele ya hobe baxana, fa ba batla hobe baxana. Nkaya bo be de ki kore ya bon tropen baba ike meti nganosi, bo kheba ilo kora ba tsho tse huri, ba tropiwa yano huya kamula wa di topo, o kua di ling kora mongole mwongu tshanele kora aufi chelele. Le threshold e ba ne wang, ele ka ne ho le ebeteng ma koko agi politiki. Me bon tropen baba ike meti nganosi, re batla hui tse kora haba na le ma di ahu duela, antwa ka e. Haraba tse huri ena antwa kodina kensabu di chaba chaba. Haraba tse huri di na kadi sebe di kaha laola naja yarona. Kajalo lo la jaka komiti, re lekopa huri le ne nglika rolo ya hona ba oka mediba I E C, hobe na huri di lo di diro akatshanele, kialiboha.
Thank you. The next and last speaker.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Valentine Sanchani. I'm a resident of Mukaka, Watsixten in particular, and a member of the ANC. Chair, my point of departure is that the Constitutional Court in allowing independents to participate in provincial and national elections was just a step in enhancing democracy. At the same time, it confirmed the current state of electoral regime in our country. That electoral regime is based on proportional representation. The PR system has a way of accommodating even minority parties. And therefore, the Constitutional Court was not in any way proposing that the PR regime must be changed. All what the Constitutional Court was saying was that allow independents to join this particular regime. Now, if they join this particular regime, it means that they must be treated like parties in this particular regime. They don't come in as special participants, but as parties. Therefore, in terms of qualifying to stand, the same qualifications that apply for parties must apply for them. In terms of allocation of seats using the PR formula, the same formula must apply for them. When they have more seats, the formula says the party that comes next, not the person, not the candidate. It means that if they get more than the required threshold, their seats will then be allocated to another party, not to themselves. Therefore, firstly, we support the PR principle and they must fall in line with the PR principle. Secondly, Chairperson, the issue of funding. We know that the Political Party Funding Act allows funders to fund multiple parties. A funder can fund ANC 100,000, fund DA, and so on, and so on, and so on. However, we propose that we need to have a regime in terms of independence. Whether a single funder can fund a particular number of independents, avoid a situation where a billionaire will fund 1,000 independents and in reverse have a party under the guide of independence. We must come up with some regulation in terms of how much number of independents a particular donor can then fund. Already in terms of the party political funding disclosure, in that way, we will avoid illicit funding of independents. The third point, Chair, my comrades have talked about the logistics in terms of the number of independents. If we don't make the qualifying criteria too strict, you will have a long ballot paper. And a long ballot paper increases the potential of spoilt papers, which on itself is a result of unfair elections. The final point, Chair, is how do you then deal with those who short-schedule the processes? How do you then deal with those who cheat the processes? How do you then deal with those when we say they must have a particular number of signatures, then they forge them? Obviously, they must be disqualified. And we are saying that the committee must ensure that the I E C has got mechanisms, capacity, and ability to deal with those issues. We are endorsing the bill, Chairperson. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kialiboha mudilasjulo, li na la me ki na Valentine Sanchani, ibile kilo lokola ANC. Kla ki rata kere kareza fano faki huri yesere amahela mula tomo onu fe la jaka onzi. Kala bakala huri ki nta iki rata kusi mula kaya ne e dumeluwa ki mula woteo warona wanaja. Wa huri bon tropen baba ike meti nganosi bakakhona kute na moko kuanu bo setaba, le moteng ka kota tso mula w. Ki silo kudirua jalo, ki za hura ki khatalo pele enge mona kenyarona. Ibe le senesosidumeluwa ki mula wara wa buitsoaro wa di topo. PR system erenzeru biwa kaya ne, khaso hura tota kota sekalo yarna ya mula woteo, tota ine e etlaka di tshadi pefele se diisha. Ine esati tsi ni peto hoi ebefano.